I think we're still missing Director Farmer. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. AGP, are we ready? Okay. It is 1:01, I'm calling the meeting of the CCSD Board of Directors to order. Please join, stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, we have a quorum, all directors are present. Mr. Carmel, do you have a report from closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At a special meeting this morning, the board held a closed session under Government Code, Section 54, 957, where it considered whether to hear an appeal of an employee dismissal or to delegate the matter to an administrative law judge. The board unanimously agreed to delegate the matter to an administrative law judge. The motion was made by President Dean and was seconded by Vice President Gray. The employee's name will not be disclosed in order to protect their privacy rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on their closed session report?
No.
No, anybody in the audience? No? Okay, moving on to the President's report. I just want to compliment the people of California, oops. Over 39,813 volunteers across California participated in the coastal cleanup day for this year. These volunteers picked up 294,012 pounds of trash and an additional 48,191 pounds of recyclable material for a total of 342,203 pounds or 171 tons. And it's very heartening to see that so many people care about our California coastline and volunteered to do this. I want to thank all of our fire crews and all the other fire crews around us that worked so diligently to put out the fire off Highway 46. It was pretty scary seeing that, all that smoke from Cambria, and quite a large number of our community members expressed concerns about how to get evacuation alerts and updates on the status of the fire. At the September 27th meeting of the Cambria Fire Safe Focus Group, Mr. Scott Jalbert of the Office of Emergency Services gave an extensive overview of the Zone Haven Maps and System, as well as how to find out what zone you're in and how to get updates and what websites to sign up to get evacuation alerts. I believe Mr. Pearson from the Fire Safe Focus Group is going to help me arrange to have Mr. Jalbert do that Zone Haven presentation here at a board meeting in November along with Fire Captain, Fire Chief Berkey. So hopefully we'll have a good attendance for that and people can get that information. An agenda review, oh, I'm supposed to take public comment on my report. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience? No? Okay. Agenda review, does anybody have any changes they would like to see in the order of the agenda? Seeing none. Board member communications, does any member of the board have anything that they wish to make an announcement on, report briefly on, or ask a question for clarification? Director Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, Saturday, this coming Saturday, 8:06 a.m., a partial solar eclipse starts in our part of the country. Total eclipse, you know, other regions, but so it's worth being aware and putting that on the calendar.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just come, pardon me, President Dean. So in case anybody's like a little more detail, the solar eclipse is taking place at 21 degrees of Libra. Thank you.
Okay, I'll get out my Sky app and look for that. Okay. Okay, now we're moving on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I have one speaker slip and that is from David Pearson. Welcome, Mr. Pearson.
Good afternoon, Madam President and Board. I will start by thanking the General Manager and the firefighters in Cambria for working on the challenge of the huge increase in properties to be cleared of weeds and fire fuel. They've done an excellent job of getting it done, finally, but it was a challenge because of all of the properties that weren't cleared by their owners. I also thank CAL FIRE leadership and crews for their response to the green fire on Route 46 north of Cambria. Their swift action led to a containment of less than 250 acres burned with no loss of life. Now is the time to ask, are you ready for a wildfire? Do you have a go-bag? Do you have an evacuation plan? Do you have a defensible space around your home? If you need free review of your space, you can contact me and I will get either CAL FIRE or some other qualified person to go around and look at your property and make recommendations as to what you can do. The Cambria Fire Safe Focus Group has been working for years to make Cambria safer from the possible, possibility of a wildfire. Recently, we sponsored a chipping day to reduce the fuel in Cambria. Thanks to Bob Putney, it was a very successful event. Through grants, we continue to reduce the fuel load in Cambria and provide fire breaks in the community while maintaining and improving forest health. With the CCSD Board, we are working on evacuation planning. We are staying abreast of the latest information on fire insurance and the challenges that are facing us in that area throughout California, but especially in Cambria. If you're getting a quote from the Fair Plan of California, be aware that the minimum seems to be about $14,000 per year now. Our meetings, Cambria Fire Safe Focus Group, our meetings are full of good information to help you better prepare for a wildfire. Our meetings are on the last Wednesday of every month at 3:00 p.m. at the firehouse and on Zoom. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment, Ms. Dodson?
Yes, Elizabeth Bentonhausen, followed by some written comment.
Okay. Dr. Bentonhausen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I attended the meeting this morning and I think it would be helpful to the general populace were a brief explanation given of the decisions at that meeting because the repair is going to start before your next meeting, next Thursday. So in order to help people in town understand what's going on, just a brief summation of that meeting would be helpful. I also missed responding to your President's comments, Madam President, and I want to thank, I don't know who's responsible, but for the past two years, we have had very harsh trash on Shimmel Park Beach and Santa Rosa Creek Beach up to the parking lot at the southern end of the boardwalk. I don't know who's picking it up, but it is amazing how little trash there is at that beach. So either we got through to somebody or the miracles of the universe got through to somebody, but I want to thank all those people who pick up the trash, both locals and especially the tourists. I noticed the kids are coming with many fewer toys that they don't pick up. So it's refreshing and I applaud it and may it go on for at least, at least 932 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to answer? I think she was asking about the water main break.
Yes, Madam President. So I do have our utilities manager, Mr. Green, online, and he probably could add some more detail than myself.
Okay. It's okay if I do that, isn't it, Mr. Carmel?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. And go ahead and have Mr. Green come on.
Hi, good afternoon. We're in the final processes of securing a contractor for what will be Tuesday morning, the 17th, where this will be during business hours for the next few days. So we're looking at Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Potentially Thursday, we're trying to get it knocked out in two days where Tuesday, we will take that small section of the community, what we had to isolate for the repair, that will be out of water again for that time where we do the replacement there on site. The following days will be for road repair. So we will put in another 40 feet, make two interconnections or two tie-ins to that 10-inch line, and then repair the road there and put it back into service.
Thank you. So what part of the community will be out of water while you're doing that repair?
Great question. That will be from Main Street and Cambria Drive all the way up to Croydon to kind of the edge of the Limer area there. That will be the residential and commercial customers, basically just on Main Street.
Okay, and then the traffic will be affected just from basically the bank to Cambria Road?
That short Pine Knolls stint from Pine Knolls Drive to Main Street, or on Main Street to Cambria Drive will be the section that will be shut down with no through traffic.
Okay.
Just during the business hours, those days. So basically from 7:00 or 8:00 till 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. those days, they will be open all night for through traffic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and Madam President, just to add a little bit of detail for those of the public that didn't maybe catch the special meeting, we did have a major waterline break in which it raised that section of the road up two to three inches, right where our ADA accessible ramps are. So that's a major improvement and needs to happen. Mr. Green, that was on Tuesday, I think the break was?
Yes, Tuesday at 9:15 a.m.
Yeah, so Tuesday at 9:15 a.m., Mr. Green and his crews immediately started trying to repair that leak. That was an all-day affair that extended into midnight when they finally were able to shut off the leak, but there was extensive damage to the road there that has to be fixed. That is the reason we brought it forward for the budget adjustment. Mechanics Bank currently is without water and will be without water until we fix it. So that was a certain sense of urgency in terms of public health and water access and potable water. So that's why we brought it before the special board, the special board meeting, to have that budget adjustment. Some initial ranges, we thought could be from a quarter million to a half a million in repairs. We're getting better news, which we think the upper end should be around 200, but we, this morning allotted for up to $300,000 for repair for contingencies. And so Mr. Green is going to work with the contractors once they're selected, and on Tuesday, we're hoping to begin work. And that could extend into Wednesday, potentially Thursday, depending on what kind of issues they run into.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
I just have written comment to read.
Okay.
The first written comment is from Linda Prentice. Please, is there any plan as to when or if the first 100 building permits will be issued? Thank you, Linda. And the second public comment is from Donald Archer. President Dean, Vice President Gray, and members of the board, I have concerns about the CCSD's negotiations with the CUSD with regards to leasing this SR4 well site. After some back and forth offers and counteroffers, it seems to me that the CCSD should sign the contract that the CUSD has offered, a 10-year lease for approximately $36,000 a year and no added CPI. The district has managed this level of expense for the last 20 years and inflation has not affected the cost. It would seem to be a prudent and fair deal for both parties. The cost, as I understand it, amounts to about 75% per month per each CCSD customer. The rate will be locked in for another 10 years, and in the meantime, the district can still have the property appraised. Whatever the cost and result of such an appraisal, the needless expense of legal fees and litigation will be eliminated and a stable, manageable expense can be budgeted for the coming 10 years. Why create bad feelings between the CCSD and the CUSD? Why subject residents to the expense of both CCSD and CUSD costs of legal fees and litigations should the CCSD not accept the CUSD's offer? Why add these new expenses to the ones the district already incurs? And why replace the known with yet another unknown? It doesn't make sense. With the significant issues the district faces with regards to our very obliviously failing water delivery, infrastructure, and other pressing concerns, I would think the CCSD has a very full plate indeed and shouldn't be adding more to it. Dear Board members, please be very careful and prudent before you inadvertently open up a bigger can of worms. Thank you, Donald Archer. And that's all I have for written comment.
Okay. Is there any public comment from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to regular business item 4A, Mr. McElhenney, would you want to introduce that, please?
Yes, Madam President. Agenda 4A, receive a presentation from Integrated Waste Management Authority for Recycle Right. We invited Mr. Mike De Milo and Mr. Peter Cron, who are here to give us a presentation and bring some more clarity and a little bit of public education to the right way to recycle and things of that nature. So they have a very nice presentation for us.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the presentation first. Welcome, Mr. De Milo.
Thank you, President Dean and Board members, for inviting IWMA today to share some what we think is important information about solid waste and recycling in San Luis Obispo County. So got a slide program I want to share with you today, and then we'll take some questions after the slides are over. So with that, let's start our program called Recycle Right. Our goals for today in the program are twofold. One, I'd like people to learn, if they don't already know, what happens to materials that are placed on the curb, so they know very specifically what happens with those items. And then secondarily, I'd like people to better understand what IWMA is and the resources that are available to your jurisdiction. So we'll focus on those two items through our program today. What is IWMA? A lot of people, it needs to be demystified, excuse me. So the San Luis Obispo County IWMA is a government entity formed through a joint powers authority in 1994. So why all of a sudden did they form? Well, it turns out in 1990, a then landmark piece of legislation called the Integrated Waste Management Act, or AB 939, was enacted. It mandated that every city, every jurisdiction, reduce the amount of solid waste going to landfills by certain metrics, and if they didn't, they could be fined up to $10,000 per day. So in my opinion, the cities got together and found out that they could create an agency that could work and do all of those AB 939 requirements much more efficiently than each city working on its own. So that was, in my mind, the catalyst for the formation of IWMA back in 1994. It's governed by an eight-person board, and those members are made up of the seven major cities and then someone representing the unincorporated areas of our county. So what's the mission of IWMA? To coordinate efforts on behalf of member agencies like yours to make sure that we're compliant with a whole array of state mandates, and many more laws have passed since AB 939 that require us to do a lot of work. So that's what IWMA is there for, and it does that through cost-effective programs, education, and technical support to its member jurisdictions. So that, in a nutshell, is IWMA. I'm involved in public education and school education. So I'm a contractor that works for IWMA and many other public education, or public agencies to provide educational outreach. So that's my niche. We do hundreds of class presentations a year, and we go to public events. On a typical year, we do about 20 presentations in schools in your jurisdiction, all at no cost to teachers. All right, so let's go to the curbside now and find out what happens to all of that stuff. There's a real success story here to start with. Those numbers are this number of gallons that each container holds. If we would have looked at the same picture several decades ago, we would have found that the garbage container, the gray one, would have been the largest. Maybe there would have been a small recycle container, that's the blue one, and probably not even an organics or green waste container. So we're learning better how to manage our natural resources and recycle things rather than to send everything to the landfill. We have three major landfills in San Luis Obispo County. Your materials go to the Cold Canyon landfill just south of the San Luis Obispo Airport, and it was constructed in 1965. In a typical day, well over 1,000 tons of material go to those three landfills. So where they're collecting a lot of materials. One of the things that people may not know is that nobody at the landfill, any landfill for that matter, is going to walk through and pull recyclables out. So once someone puts something in a trash can, it's going to be buried in a landfill forever. So there's a lot of technology and things that have to happen at the landfill so that it's managed properly. Space is their number one consideration. Landfills are permitted in a three-dimensional capacity. When they use up that space, the landfill has to close. So this machine is a compactor. It weighs about 85,000 pounds, costs about a million bucks, and it drives over and over the trash all day so they can get as much trash per cubic foot or per cubic yard as possible into that landfill, extending the life of the landfill. Now, organics are a big topic these days. When we use the word organics, we mean food waste and green waste. State of California does not want organics going to landfills any longer. One of the issues with organics, especially food waste going to landfills, is seagulls come in and try to use the landfill as a buffet. That's not a good thing. The other problem with organics and landfills is, as they decompose anaerobically, they generate what we call landfill gases. Carbon dioxide and methane make up over 90% of all of our landfill gases, and you can't leave them in the landfill. Every landfill has to have what's called a gas recovery system. That's expensive and it's time-consuming. These pipes go down vertically and horizontally, then they pull the gas out. And the last time I checked, Cold Canyon was generating over 800 cubic feet a minute of landfill gases. Now, after you collect it, what are you going to do with it? Well, there's a bit of a success story here. They're sending it to a power generating station on-site where they generate roughly enough electricity to power 2,000 homes. So that sounds great, but remember, State of California still doesn't want organics going to landfills. By the way, gulls love to fly over from Pismo Beach and try to use the landfill as a buffet line. So there's a full-time falconer at the landfill with a variety of hawks and falcons for the sole purpose of keeping those gulls off of the landfill. So that's a negative consequence of having organics go to landfills. Before we leave the landfill, we've got to talk about resource recovery parks and household hazardous waste. Resource recovery parks are, well, we say with our younger students, last chance recycling. Someone pulls in in a flatbed truck or a pickup truck, they've got one last chance. If they're willing to separate those items and put them into their respective categories, these things and many more will get recycled at the landfill. So that's a really great asset to have there to extend the life of the landfill. Also, we have household hazardous waste facilities at all of our county landfills. These materials that you see come up on the screen are ones that we don't want pour down the drain. We don't want them to go in the gutter in a storm drain. Many people think that our storm drains lead to wastewater treatment plants. That's not the case. So our waste, our household hazardous waste facilities will take all these materials at no cost to local residents. So these facilities, as I said, are at all of the landfills, and of course, there's one in Morro Bay relatively close to here, on Atascadero Road. Just get off at Highway 41 and turn right and you'll be there. I do suggest that you check on the IWMA website before going because it is closed on some selected holidays, but 11:00 to 3:00 on Saturdays are the HHW hours for your local HHW site. All right, I'd like to segue now to recycling. What happens to all that stuff that you put in your blue bins? It goes to a 50,000-square-foot facility on the back end of the Cold Canyon landfill, and it's called a material recovery facility, but in the industry, they call it a MRF. Okay? So we have a MRF at Cold Canyon that your materials go through, and all they do is sort out all the different materials because they can't be recycled together, and then they bale them, and I'm going to show you the baler, and then they ship them out somewhere where they'll be made into something new. Amazing, over 260 tons a day of curbside recyclables come into the Cold Canyon MRF. The stuff is just dumped on a concrete tipping floor, and now the fun begins sorting out all of this stuff. So it goes on to what we call a sort line, which is 16 feet above the ground, and the first six people we're looking at here is called the pre-sort line. Sadly, they need to be there because there is so much contamination in our recyclables, they want to pull that stuff out right away. If they don't, there could be things, for example, we call them tanglers, like a long electrical cord or some old Christmas lights that would get tangled up in machinery and equipment and cause a shutdown of the entire sort line. So there's our pre-sort line. Next, they want to sort out the largest pieces of materials. This is called a cardboard screen, and you'll notice in the video, large pieces of cardboard being kicked forward. Everything else is going off to the right onto another sort line. So we're now starting to see that technology is really involved today in sorting out our materials. Here's another sort line for smaller items. You can hear all those bottles and cans, they're going to fall through some openings and go on to another sort line. What we want is paper to get up to the top, to the final paper line, and then here you can see sorters working and pulling out contamination that made its way through. So anything that's not a clean piece of paper on this line is contamination. And last, they're going to use gravity. This line is going right here, and those materials will fall back to ground level where they can be collected for baling. Wanted to show you two other pieces of technology that I think people find amazing. This one's called an eddy current. So it's an electromagnetic current that goes across the line. When aluminum hits this invisible electromagnetic current, it jumps in the air and goes over this partition. Let's see how that works. So you can see non-aluminum here, aluminum on this side, with a few exceptions, but for the most part, does a very good job of sorting aluminum. And then our last piece of technology I'll share with you, our new technology, is robots. So robots are now sorting bottles and cans. They can be programmed to pick up just about anything that we put into our blue cart. And this will do at maximum 60 picks per minute, which is pretty quick. All right, we're going to move on forward, get off of the sort line. Here's all the materials that have been sorted. We'll go to the baler. This exerts a force of about 2,000 pounds per square inch on our recyclables. It wraps wire around the materials so they stay together. Glass is the only thing that it cannot bail, and then bales are stacked up and then sold out on the market to recover some, all the funds that it took to collect them and process them in the first place. But remember, all that stuff is saving space in the landfill and in theory, at least saving us energy, air pollution, and other valuable environmental considerations. All right, segueing to organics, that's a big deal in California these days. CAL Recycle, our state recycling agency, tells us that roughly 30% by weight of what's going into landfills is organic content. Now, their definition of organic includes wood and textiles and a few other things, but still, that's a lot of material that we're now wanting to keep out of the landfill. So here's our law, SB 1383, requires that we provide organics collection to residents and businesses throughout California. That's a lot of work. There are other elements to 1383, like edible food recovery, that are very labor-intensive and a lot of work. So jurisdictions everywhere, including ours, are really working hard to be compliant with 1383. One of the ways to do that is to have a commercial recycling team that goes out and visits businesses, like the ones you see listed here, to make sure that they have organics containers and that they know how to properly sort and get everything ready so that when their waste hauler pulls up, there's minimal amounts of contamination. So how do we do that? We approach each business with a custom flyer that tells them all about 1383, how they can be compliant with that, what they need to do, who they can call, and IWMA offers lots of free resources for them, sorting posters and containers. And this is a biggie, you have to have You have to have the right container, or your collection system isn't going to work very efficiently. So we provide green organics. There's even a dolly here. Organics weigh eight to twelve pounds per cubic foot from a restaurant, so you don't want someone hurting their back hauling this twenty-three-gallon container over here. So we do a lot of outreach to businesses to make sure that they are compliant. These are just some of the things that we can now put, whether it's residential or business, into our green waste cart. What's not on here is food-soiled paper. That's a biggie. We can now put in organics coffee filters and other paper that has absorbed fats, greases, and oils. Food pails, they are free to residents in San Luis Obispo County. I brought a few today in case somebody needs one. And we have these wonderful stickers. I brought the updated version of this so people can apply this onto their green cart or whatever container they want. All right, so if we're collecting all these organics, you have to have the infrastructure to process them and turn them into electricity and compost. So let me share with you the infrastructure that we currently have to collect all of these organics. This is the anaerobic digester located right next to the San Luis Obispo Airport, built in two thousand and eighteen, cost of about twenty-five million dollars by a private company. So it works really simply. So you take the organics and you put them in a big steel container. You let them sit there for about two weeks at a hundred and thirty-one degrees Fahrenheit, and then you collect the gas and you turn that into electricity, and then you take the solids out one end and you make compost. And then some of the material is recirculated to keep those microbes going. But the star of the show are the microbes, googleplexes of microbes in there, doing the work and creating all of this wonderful gas and breaking down our solids. This is the kind of stuff that used to go to the landfill, and now by collecting from restaurants, we can keep out and send it to the digester for a higher and better use. All right, so we're at the digester now. Hundred tons a day coming in. Material goes on the tipping floor, and then it's ground up. This machine is called a star screen, and you'll notice their pile here has finer pieces. These are coarser. This is the good stuff. This is what's going to go into the digester. That'll be re-ground. So the good material, we call them the unders, goes into a bunker. This crane works twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week automatically. It knows how hungry the digester is. It puts it on a final conveyor, takes it outside onto this conveyor, which will bring it right into the digester. So I happened to take a picture of this facility before it was completely done, and the reason I took this was, this is the digester itself, okay? There's where all of your organics go, in that tiny little hole that's fifteen feet across, or excuse me, thirty feet across and roughly ninety-five feet long. So that is where all of your organics go, and it stays there for two weeks. And then the next video I'm going to show you was taken right through that hole into the digester so you can see what your stuff looks like after it's ground up. And if you watch carefully, you'll see the methane gas bubbles coming to the top. I hope. There we go. This thing coming up is called an agitator. It goes all around the digester to help bring the methane up to the top. All right, so that's our digester. Here is the finished compost in the curing area or finishing area. It'll stay there for several months, and before it's ready to go back out into agriculture or whoever the end user is, that facility generates roughly enough energy to power six hundred homes. All right, so I've given you a little thumbnail sketch of trash, recycling, and organics. Let me get to the last part of our program. This is the what you can do part. There's some really simple things that all of our county residents can do, and one of them starts with smart shopping. People tell me, I want to be a great recycler, and I remind them, when you click that button on Amazon or pull something off the shelf, you're kind of deciding right then what's going to go to the landfill and what is going to get recycled or reused. Here's an example. Both of these containers have the same product. One is not recyclable. It's plastic and paper laminated together. This is high-density polyethylene, HDPE, very easy to recycle, good markets. So if you chose that, you're helping to promote recycling and less material going to the landfill. Another thing people could be mindful of is to make sure that they're not putting stuff in their recycle or organics cart that are contamination. We don't want to do any wishcycling anymore. We have to be absolutely sure that that item can be recycled or composted. I took this picture at the MRF, and these are all things that people had put in their blue cart. So really being more mindful about contamination. IWMA has stickers like this that people can put on their containers to remind them, if it's not on there, probably it's not recyclable. Our take-back programs are fantastic. IWMA has a county take-back program. It's on the website, and all these materials must be taken back by local retailers at no cost to the consumer. That retailer will then have a certified processor come and pick those materials up for recycling. Batteries today are a real big issue. They cause fires, whether they're in a trash truck or a recycling truck. So anyway, that could be its own separate program. So participating in our take-back programs is fantastic. Last slide of the day, some of you are probably saying, thank goodness. IWMA has a terrific website. It has lots of great resources, and if you can't find what you're looking for, there's even a phone number, and somebody even answers the phone, which is, these days, is amazing. So anyway, I thank you for your time, your patience, and I welcome any questions or comments that you may have.
That's a great presentation. Thank you. A couple of questions that people have asked me. When you're recycling things that came in cans or jars, do you have to wash them out first before you put them in the recycling container?
Yeah. So I don't want people to think that things have to be antiseptic when they go into their recycling container. If they can clean out or scrape out the large chunks of jam or peanut butter along the sides with a knife, fork, spoon, or something like that, that's terrific because we don't want food coming out on the sort line. However, some people think, well, I need to put it in my dishwasher or hand wash it. And if they want to do that for the cleanliness of their own recycling bins, that's fine. But remember, it's going in a truck with thousands of pounds of other materials, and it's not going to stay super clean anyway. But as long as food is not stuck to the sides or falling out, but a little bit of residue is going to be okay. Many of those things are going in ovens that are over two thousand degrees, and that organic material will be burned away.
Okay. And another question I'm asked is, I know you said you brought stickers to put on the green waste container. Do you also have stickers for the recycle container?
I brought some that are not stickers, but they're kind of in flyer form, but we can make sure that you get some.
Okay, great. Does anybody else on the board have some questions? Director Farmer?
Thank you. I don't know, questions, comments, all of those lines. But thank you so very much for that presentation that I've already seen done a number of times, and we'll continue to do it more so. Two thumbs up there. So I just want to bring up, excuse me, I just want to bring up a couple of things. First off, plastics. There's so many different types of plastic out there. How much of that actually can get recycled?
Okay, well, what we're doing now is we're recycling all rigid plastic bottle containers. So in the olden days, people would have to look at the bottom and see a number one through seven. We're not doing that anymore. If it's a bottle and it's rigid, you can't poke your finger through it. We will recycle it. Now, there are statistics that I look at all the time that say, well, only three percent or some very low single-digit percentage of plastics get recycled. But usually, when they're giving us that statistic, it's all plastics worldwide. So for example, a plastic swing or children's toy, that's not what we do curbside anyway. So a much higher percentage of our local plastics that are from a grocery store that had food or beverage in it get recycled, especially if it has a CRV value attached to it. And CalRecycle gives us those statistics on two-liter pet bottles, how many of those come back for recycling. And those are typically, you know, well over fifty percent return for recycling. But you can get into quite a discussion about plastics and recycling that will be very controversial depending on what statistics you want to use. But I think we do a good job curbside when people put in rigid plastic bottles or containers.
Maybe it's my prejudice or something like that, but it does, this is not a reflection on anything you're saying, but it does trouble me when I see at the market where there's a case of one or two dozen plastic bottles inside of it or more, you know, wrapped in plastic, that it takes a lot of water just to generate those bottles, and then people discard them. And I guess that just troubles me that there's a little bit, not a different consciousness with regard to the problem that's created there. But that's just me. I just have this opportunity to be on a soapbox, so I'm going to mention that.
Sure, sorry. I'll try and address this for you. Peter Caron, Executive Director for the Integrated Waste Management Authority. Thank you for the time here. It's always fun to watch Mike try and put thirty years of experience into a five-minute presentation. But what's exciting about this is that to directly answer your question, there's a new piece of legislation that has been adopted into law and signed into law, SB fifty-four. SB fifty-four is going to require that single-use plastic packaging, if it is sold in the state of California, it'll have to be made of recycled content and be recyclable in the state of California. So it's an extended producer responsibility bill, and that bill is going to address a lot of the concerns that we have on this. We're right now in the rulemaking process. I'm part of that rulemaking process, and I'm excited to be a part of it. And so, yes, I hear what you're saying, and I completely understand and agree with what you're saying. And I think this ruling will definitely facilitate what we're doing. So I invite you, if you want to contact me directly on this, I'd love to have your input, and I'd love to help you explain to everybody else in this room and around you about SB fifty-four.
If I could just bring up, thank you very much. If I could just bring up one more item, okay? With regard to cardboard, more and more people are shopping online, and so therefore they're getting more packages in cardboard. How much cardboard increase have you seen, let's say, in recent years? And how much cardboard actually gets recycled and is put back to good use?
Every piece of cardboard that goes into the recycling bin, as long as it's not soiled with either paint or a contaminant like that or wrapped in plastic, it gets recycled. They get sent off and comes back as another cardboard box or another piece of paper packaging. Forty-eight percent of all the material that goes into your recycling bin or goes into the recycling stream, both commercial and residential, is cardboard. That's why they address cardboard first thing coming into the, coming out of the MRF. So it's probably about forty-eight percent of the volume, about twenty-two to twenty-five percent of the weight.
So just one more thing, I don't mean to be making up a lot of time, but have you seen, not just here, but everywhere, has there been an increase in the amount of cardboard that's being discarded by the consumer?
Certainly. It continues to go up. That forty-eight percent was like forty-two percent about five years ago.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Gray?
Yeah, thank you, President Dean. Yeah, great, great presentation, and I really appreciate the explanation of the technology too. I had a question about one slide, the contamination slide with the picture of items on it that looks like some stuff I have put into recycling, unfortunately, like plastic wrappers and I apparently, and I know there's a pillow there, I don't think I've ever done that. My question about it is, what constitutes contamination in the recycling? This would be a recycling stream, I would think, right? Like plastic wrappers and things, or yeah, so what's the threshold there?
If you can't poke your finger through the plastic container, we would call it plastic film if it's flimsy or anything of that nature. So wrappers, plastic bags from the produce section are not recyclable.
And bubble wrap?
So, and bubble wrap is not, is not either. Now, there may be a shipping store that would take them back from you for reuse, but at the MRF, they don't want those materials.
Not recyclable then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're just, and I have to add this, there is a place called TerraCycle in New Jersey, and this is my answer to the fanatics of recycling. I'm not suggesting you are, Mr. Gray. And they will recycle just about anything, and they send you a zero-waste box. It's about this big, and you pay for shipping with it, and it's about a hundred and seventy-five dollars for this amount of recyclables. You can put pins, crans, old sunglasses in, cigarette butts. They will recycle all of that. So we can recycle anything, but it's at a cost. What we see at our curbside is what's cost-effective.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Director Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, a couple of questions for IWMA, and then one question for us. And the, you know, you explained most of my questions away. I'm curious, in the green waste, no compostable bags. Explain the rationale.
Certainly. So we try to create a program that, part of SB thirteen eighty-three is our requirement to meet our procurement requirements, which we have to procure organic waste materials to create a circular economy. As of now, there is not a compostable plastic bag that will meet the Armory certification for organic compost. And until that changes, we can't put compostable plastics into our organics because we can't use it. We're largely, you know, agricultural community, and so we've got the opportunity to create a circular economy with the materials that we put into the green bin. If we put compostable plastics into it, that destroys that circular economy.
Got it. And I saw paper in that stream. So I gather it is okay to put, you know, some paper on the bottom of your food waste bucket so it doesn't get such a...
Absolutely. I mean, you know, one of the things about that, it's the X-factor, right? Everybody's trying to fight the X-factor with the compost buckets. So on our social media sites, we show you how to fold a piece of newspaper into a little bag that goes inside of your compost pail so we can accept that. You can put a napkin on the bottom, you can put a piece of newspaper in there, anything that's not plastic coated paper.
Awesome. And then perhaps a harder question, maybe it's easy, but the relationship, we pay our bills to Mission Country Disposal, and the relationship, just in a nutshell, between IWMA and MCD?
So the Integrated Waste Management Authority, as Mike said, we're a joint powers of authority, and we're tasked with, through our JPA agreement, we're tasked with complying with state regulations. Part of that is working directly with the haulers, because without the haulers, nothing starts. So we have to work directly with the hauling companies to manage how the materials flow, how it's reported, and how we report to the state of California. For example, AB nine thirty-nine put the onus of responsibility for special districts to the county level, whereas SB thirteen eighty-three recognizes Cambria CSD as the responsible party. So we've been working with your staff on making sure that you're compliant, and by the way, you're doing a fabulous job. I think you're about ninety-eight percent compliant on SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. And so, you know, that our relationship is to make sure that we communicate not just with the jurisdictions, but with the jurisdictions, the haulers, and the hauler facilities to make sure that we're meeting these state mandates.
Great, thank you. And the question for us is, you know, most issues within the district, it's, you know, it's clear that what scope goes to RNI committee and what scope goes to finance. And I was scratching my head, and someone was asking the other day, if there were community issues, which of the standing committees would unearth those issues and bring them up at a point of discussion? Probably future discussion, but...
Are you talking about issues with waste?
Oh, well, within each standing committee responsibility is a statement that's, you know, surface issues within your purview, right? And like within which standing committee purview is solid waste disposal?
Okay.
It's not, it's not clear.
Yeah, it's not clear, but we can discuss that later.
Of course.
Okay, Director Scott, did you have any questions?
I did have a question. So I just want to, so the trash bags that we get that say are biodegradable, they aren't.
They're not biodegradable at the facility that we operate or a commercial composting facility. They're biodegradable in a landfill potentially over time, but the challenge with any of these plastics or any of these polymers, the two words that in my estimation should probably never go together are compostable and plastic, because there's a polymer additive inside of there. So it just doesn't work to maintain our Armory certification.
So the, so the, so when you have a bunch of little pieces of cardboard and all of that kind of stuff, don't put them in a plastic bag?
No, because if you put it into a plastic bag and it goes in the MRF, they'll throw it away because they don't have time to break open the bag.
That's my question.
Okay. That's the challenge that we face. I mean, they're processing two-hundred-and-sixty tons a day. Two-hundred-and-sixty come in, two-hundred-and-sixty have to go out. And it's a, it's a... And it's a it's a fast moving piece of equipment.
Okay, so I've seen compostable drink cups and things like that. So that applies to that, too?
Correct. Those are garbage in our world.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comment on this? Yes, Jeff Wilson, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, President Dean, board members, team. Milo, great presentation. I have some questions, though, I think that that haven't been addressed. And if I may cover them through the three pathways. So I'll start with organic and green waste. And this is really relative to the compostability particular bags. In my former city, our materials recovery provider, CRNR, has an anaerobic digester in the city of Paris, who may be familiar with it. And their digester is able to process fats, oils, grease, as well as BPI certified compostable bags. I don't understand why ours cannot. In my humble opinion, it should be. So, yeah. Okay, yeah, I mean, apparently it's technically possible in an anaerobic digester to have compostable bags not come up for it, as well as fats, oils and grease.
Okay, do you want to?
So anyway, we don't, I know we're not looking for answers now. It's my question. And then relative to the outcome of the organic green waste after digester, I understand that it looks like it goes to some kind of electric electricity provider. I think we'd want more information about that. But where does it go? Is it fuel the electricity for the facility or out into the grid? What happens to it? On recyclables, I was told on the phone by an MCD representative recently that it was okay to have a fully transparent plastic, clear plastic bag, but clearly you guys are saying no, I think we need to know what it is. And then relative to the disposition of the adopted recyclable materials, once they've been sorted and processed at the MRF. You know, I know you talk about that stream, but there's been a lot of changes, particularly since China does no longer imports our waste. What, where are those really going? And how are they sold in the market? That would be very important to know specifics of that. And then lastly, on the trash and the landfill side for bagging of this material, what is the best material option from an environmental standpoint to use for our landfill? Is it plastic bag, biodegradable, compostable, paper or something else? And then finally, two comments. I strongly urge the CCSD Board to go take a visit to these facilities. It's incredibly eye opening and what you might see here is, in my experience, oftentimes different what you see on site. And I don't mean that in a negative way. And then I think mostly importantly in closing is I really strongly urge an ongoing education PSA campaign with from MCD to educate more fully our community on how to dispose of our post consumer materials, both at the residential and the commercial levels, especially restaurants and hotels. I mean, one page flyer should be included in quarterly billings to reinforce the messaging. People aren't going to remember this stuff. It gets a little complicated. And every new customer that comes onto an MCD billing should get a package with this kind of material to help them know what to do. It does get complicated. People won't remember. That happened to me. I was for six years putting on my recyclable material into a into a white plastic bag, six years, only to find out recently that all went to the landfill. I was devastated. So if I'd known, I would have not have done that, but that's not how it was in my previous. Anyway, and then all this material should be easily accessible on the MCD or other websites, social media. And I think this should be an ongoing PSA education campaign for our community that just doesn't end. It's part of our contract with MCD. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Howell.
Thank you. Yeah, we're on. I just have
If you.
You, but I'll face this way. Okay, three questions. One, in regards to the plastic bottles, should we be taking the caps off the bottles?
Okay.
Okay. And then regarding paper products that are that have food waste on them, as for example, paper plates. What about the paper plates which are plastic coated? Whether those whether those can be composted or whether we have to put them in the landfill. And then this is, this is really the real question I want answered, however, is this last one, which is, we have these wonderful bins to put our organic waste in and they work beautifully. They, you know, can put stuff in there and it doesn't, it just sits there and putrefies, but doesn't stink up the place. It's great. The problem is that if it's, I say, I have a family of two and we managed to fill up one of those little things in in a two week period. Since we don't generate enough green waste every two weeks to put any significant amount of green waste in our green thing. If we were to dump the little bin into the empty green waste, then when the truck starts to empty it, all it's going to do is dribble down the side. So the issue here is, is it possible? In other words, it's a great idea, but we're not quite, I don't think we're quite there yet as to how do we handle the our own household organic waste? Particularly in cases where we don't generate enough green waste to in any sanitary reasonable way to put our garbage on top of it. So is that clear? Anyway, thank you. Look forward to the answers.
Thank you. Is there any more public, just second, see if anybody else has any questions for you to answer. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online?
No.
Okay. Even with Mr. Howell's question about the little container, I have seen people set it on top of their trash can, just that little bucket. Does the the recycle truck dump that bucket for them?
So I'll start with saying that's really a challenge and we're trying to figure out exactly how to manage that. You know, as as we continue, that's where the working with the the hauler is so important. I mean, you know, these your drivers, the people that actually work on the streets are fabulous. I mean, they they go out of their way to try and accommodate anything that goes out there. It's a work in process and we're continuing to work on that part. I mean, definitely add to that.
Basic immune site manager for Mission Cutter Disposal, absolutely. I mean, the benefit of Cambria is there's a two man team on that truck. So one guy's in the truck, one guy's outside. So they're able to take the can off the bin and dump the recycle items or whatever items in the truck. But we, you know, we try not to do that to every customer because it just takes a long time to do that. But we will do our best to, you know, dump the material in the truck.
Thank you.
I would just add, and I know this may sound bizarre, the food waste popsicle. For people with small amounts, you take a freezer Ziploc bag and you put your food scraps in it. And if you have space in your freezer, you keep it there. And then on pickup day, you open the Ziploc, let the ice cube or popsicle fall out. And now it doesn't dribble all over the place and it'll probably stay pretty solid until it's picked up. I'm not sure if the hauler is thrilled about that, but I'll bet they I'll bet they wouldn't mind too much. And surprising number of people will do that. And if they complain about odors, the odors aren't there if you do the food waste popsicle.
Thank you. Okay, I think there were a couple of other questions.
I'll try to address the ones that I can recall. My memory is not really that good. But as far as the CRNR utilizing those materials, the reason we can't is it gets back to Armory certification. I can't ask my compost facilities to take something that's going to take away their market to sell these materials as organic materials. So compostable bags, biodegradable bags are not yet. And that's not something that we choose. It's something that just is.
Okay, and I think he had a question about plastic coated paper plates.
Plastic coated paper plates are are trash. I'm sorry, they won't, the plastic coating, that's also another thing that's going to be addressed by SB thirteen eighty three, SB fifty four. I'm sorry, that they're going to take and identify these materials as plastic components. And so they will be addressed under that regulatory statute.
Okay, and the other question is, do you take the cap off of your bottles that you're recycling?
Not necessary. It's okay if you do, but it's not necessary because during the process of bailing, the caps fly everywhere. We sweep them up.
Okay.
There was, there was one other question about plastics and where are they recycled? I can give you a single example on that because China soared was devastating to the recycling commodities market. Our local recycling facility did not send material to China. It still doesn't. They they chose not to have that relationship. So for example, your detergent bottles, your milk bottles, a lot of your plastics go to a facility in Lodi. At that facility in Lodi, those materials, it's owned by a company called Epic Plastics. And your detergent bottle and or milk jug that you put into the bin a couple of weeks ago may be coming down the road as landscape borders or landscape plastics being sold at Home Depot here today. So there is a circular economy on a lot of these pieces. We strive to maintain that. We strive as best we can is to keep those markets domestic.
Okay, great. Director Farmer.
Thank you, President Dean. Just thank you for being so knowledgeable. So just three items here. So first off, as Mr. Howell is addressing, let's say you generate like very little kitchen waste and putting it in the freezer. You know, we're all neighbors and it might not be a bad idea just to, you know, connect with your neighbor who apparently puts out more green waste than you do and just ask them, say, do you mind if I put my stuff in your green waste can?
Correct. That's, that's, that's a fabulous example because we're actually working a lot more and more with with especially multifamily units to create shared service experiences. So they can share the share, share an organic spin so they get not just economy of scale, but also they can all utilize it and it's full. And it keeps it from becoming something that's troublesome.
Right. Also, with regard to, and this is something that Mr. Wilson brought up, with regard to for six years, he was bagging the recycling, which just went into the trash. And I often see people putting bags of whatever in the recycling. Obviously, it needs to be separated. So you, would you advise that it's best if you're doing trash like in the gray can, that should all be bagged up? It makes it easier and cleaner overall? And then everything that's in recycling bin, the blue bin should be loose. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that totally makes sense. And and to speak to that, I mean, we're we're embarking on a new education and outreach program. And so we're going to be doing a lot of target marketing in a lot of places where we're going to utilize SB thirteen eighty three local assistance grant funds to create a program to do a lot more outreach and education. One of, we suffer from a pretty dramatic identity crisis. As the IWMA, nobody knows who we are, nobody knows what we do. And so I think that's part of our challenge is to get out there and actually become, increase our public activity. And so that's, that's one of the things that we're trying to do today, starting with a meeting like this and then to broaden that as we go forward.
If I could bring up one more item, and this doesn't necessarily reference you folks, but it's still about plastic. I see people going to the market and they just get a go in the produce section, just grab a plastic bag. And it's just as easy to think about, okay, I still have that plastic bag at home from the last time I went to the produce section. I'll take that back with me and therefore you're not throwing away as many plastic bags. I just wanted to point that out as well, you know, as well as taking a canvas bag so you're not using a paper bag when you get there. So I just wanted to put that out there. It seems like common sense, but sometimes it's uncommon. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Thomas.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Just one last comment that, yeah, I share Mr. Wilson's interest in a in a field trip at some appropriate time. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No.
No. Okay, everybody's questions answered? Okay, and I believe this PowerPoint presentation will be posted on the website, correct?
It's already posted on the website.
Great, thank you.
And it's under today's board meeting and then also on the carousel for San Luis Obispo.
Good. So that information is that will be out there on the website for people to refresh their memory. Okay, good. Thank you very much. It was a great presentation, very informative. I really appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for all your patience answering all of our questions. Thank you. Okay, are we ready to move on to Agenda 4B?
Yes, Madam President. Agenda 4B, Discussion and Consideration of Strategic Plan Update. Staff recommends that the board directors discuss and consider the monthly updates to the strategic plan. There's no fiscal impact associated with the item. The board had a special meeting on January thirtieth, twenty twenty three and January thirty first to update the strategic plan, then adopt the updated plan on the February sixteenth board meeting. The effort includes a review of underlying objectives to be primarily accomplished over the next six months. The mission statement and three year goals will not be updated since these were developed in June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, with the intention they would not be reevaluated until June twenty twenty five. However, the objectives within each goal will be discussed and updated as needed.
Okay, so we get to go through this chart. Okay, and I'm assuming all of the items in red are the items that have changed since our last update.
Yes, Madam President, and there's been a few updates connecting with Utilities Manager, Utilities Manager Green and getting some more realistic dates as far as some of our our strategic goals. Some of those being pushed back by permitting issues, supply chain issues. There's just unfortunately been a little bit of delay in some of those items, but those would be identified in red.
Since these are updates that the staff has done, would you like to review them?
Yes, Madam President. I do have Mr. Green online, but Jim, again, jump in any time if I'm not doing this right. Implementation of the Water Meteor Replacement Program under our Core Area Water Services General. We did approve that on eight ten and the procurement of those materials is in progress. So the implementation of the Water Meter Replacement Program is in progress. So the implementation of it is in progress, but we're in the process of procuring materials to move that forward. Any questions on on that item?
I don't see any lights on.
Complete the Stewart Street Tank Construction. I'll probably turn this over to Jim, but we did adjust that date to the fourth quarter of twenty twenty four. Staff has selected MKN as the design build consultant. They're going to be doing some geo check, geotechnical analysis. And and Mr. Green will be able to touch bases on this, but we do have a soil report from a decade or more ago that we might be able to use to speed up that geotech analysis. But the permitting to begin on the twenty fifth of September.
Okay, does Mr. Green have anything he wants to add?
I'm sure he does.
Yeah, fortunately, we pulled out, we unearthed a document from twenty eleven, which was a soils report, which was prepared for Stewart Street Tank Rehab all the way back then. And so underground doesn't change much. So fortunately, we were able to use that document and give it a sort of refresh. And we'll be able to get by with that without spending a lot more money on a complete geotechnical analysis there, which is also very timely. That's probably a month or so as far as soils and analysis thereof. They wanted to core down fifteen feet. So fortunately, we still had that documentation and we were able to, you know, obtain it and then provide it to our design build consultant. Also, we just scheduled an arborist for the later in the month. That's also part of the environmental permitting process there. They want to get a count of the trees, whether they're healthy, you know, bird count in there and so forth. So that is taking place, not next week, but the following. So that's about all the updates there on Stewart Street, but it's it's progressing along. We reached out to Jillian Bletz also about a week and a half ago. And again, there's that's the funding is still in process. They're still reviewing our application. So that's all she can provide for updates for us.
Okay. We probably need him for the next item, too.
Yeah, stick around, Mr. Green, so I don't mess this part up. So we're moving on to permanent replacement of the San Simeon Water Line and a fluid line. We're hoping that that will occur in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. The board approved on eight ten. The RFP, I believe that's when we approved the RFP and when the RFP was presented to the board. And staff held a kickoff meeting with Canon on August twenty ninth and then they began the permitting on nine eighteen. And so a lot of the things in terms of actual, and Mr. Green, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, as far as like shovels in the ground, that's all going to be happening post permitting. And so he can touch base on where we are with the permitting.
Okay.
Great. So, yeah, so they're permitting, so these are just applications being submitted. We'll know a deeper scope into permitting. Again, you've got cultural, historical, you know, Native American. We've got state parks, we've got every, everybody on board. As many agencies just about as you can get are going to be involved in this. So right now, our consultants are reaching out, they've filed the applications and they're kind of getting back and betting what we need to do to further those. Also, Canon has, we've got some aerial footage that was taken. Also Cannon has, we've got some aerial footage that was taken over the area and they're currently getting alternatives for positioning and lineups prepared for us. And we have a meet, a meeting scheduled with Cannon, kind of a progress meeting and then an update of some potential. I don't want to get everybody too excited, but we could have some potential alternatives for lineup ready for next week that we can start reviewing and we'll bring that to you as they come.
Thank you. Director Thomas, did you have a question on that?
Just the briefest comment. Thank you, Madam President. The supporting action under this that states present to the board, the results of the RFP. So that's complete. So I assume we would pull that off and go to the complete list for the next month? For the next report, I mean.
Probably. Yeah. Okay. We're not doing this every month though. Okay. But I'm, but I'm assuming that staff will update us on the status of it anyway.
Yes, Madam President.
Okay.
As far as the next item, research long-term water storage solutions and the RNI committee and the ad hoc committee was working on that.
Okay. So the ad hoc committee has completed the report. We approved forwarding it to the board with a slight amendment. I just got a copy of that yesterday. And so we will get it on the schedule whenever we can fit it in to bring it before the board.
Understood.
And they did a report on water supply, supplemental water supply options and long-term water storage. They did a report on both. Director Farmer?
Thank you, President Danger. Just a couple of questions on this page before we move on. With regard to the Stewart Street Tank Construction and Mr. Green, you were mentioning getting an arborist out there. Is this arborist a local person or is it someone from out of the area?
No, it's, it's a local person. It's, it's south, kind of the South Coast County. It's, it's Heritage Tree.
All right.
Anybody who's ever seen Rodney from Heritage Tree, he's in the area often. So they write full like review scope and for permitting. And then also, of course, they do arborist work and, and tree trimming and so forth.
Okay. I'd like to find out who that person is. I'll contact you some other time also. With regard to permanent replacement of the San Simeon Water Line and Affluent Line. So we have an updated target completion date, which is the first quarter of 2025. Can you give us a rough estimate as to when the project will begin?
Well, after we get the permitting complete and the analysis for the planning, you, you've always got two steps to all these. When you're going into design and engineering, you've got the planning portion, the permitting portion. And then you've got the construction person portion of that. So we'll get the engineering design. We'll submit those plans. Those will have to be approved, approved by the county and all the other shareholders involved. And then we'll go out to, that'll narrow the scope for construction because we'll have an alignment, an interconnection location, whether it be on San Simeon Creek Road or Van Gordon or there at State Parks. And then an interconnection there at what is now Dow on Exarded Garden Drive where we have the current connection. We're going to tie back into that. So once we get that scope more narrow to where that alignment is going to be, then we can RFP for the actual construction of this project. These are two different, again, two different projects, the engineering portion of it, and then of course the actual construction portion of that.
So if I could just quickly ask, let's say, when the shovel goes in the ground and we begin the actual, you know, construction of this project till it's finished, are we talking about three months, six months? I know we've discussed this before. I just want some clarification for myself, the other members of the board and the community.
No, it's a great question, Director Farmer. So there's two lines, remember, that we're replacing out there. We have our, our potable line, you know, which provides 80% of the water to the community. And then we have a wastewater treated affluent line as well. What we're going to do is we have that high line installed right now. So I'm not picking water because they're more important in my old department, but the water line will go in first because we have a high line out there and we have water provided to the community. So we'll go ahead and install that first. Then we'll take the waste, what we'll use that line that we have high line for the potable water line. We'll reuse that and we'll use that for the wastewater affluent line while we install the wastewater line. Look for the project to be three to six months, three months if everything goes great and six month if we run into some issues underground.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Scott?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, I just need to say something about this beautiful form. And I think Director Thomas really deserves a big thank you about this. Because when I look at this and let's say I, if I were the utilities manager, I could see exactly where we're headed. And this has just been really helpful for me. I mean, it did help. But, but thank you, Director Thomas, and thank you, Jim. Oh, and, and thank you. Oh, do I have to say? Ms. Dodson, Ms. Dodson. But this, this is great. And I love that the things that are completed are a different color. So I just need to say this is great.
I was planning on praising all of you that worked on this when we got to.
I know, but I'm just sitting here going, wow.
It is. It's a whole lot easier to, to follow what's going on. And I have to say, the ad hoc committee, along with the help with the general manager, Ms. Dodson did a fantastic job on this. So thank you. And I was intending to praise you at the end of this. Okay. It is a, a whole lot easier to follow. It really is. Okay. We need to move on. We're going to be here all night.
Okay, Madam President. Moving on to our strategical advanced coastal development permit to Chief County and Coastal Commission approval. Our first item resolved the brine waste disposal issue that has been changed to first quarter of 2024. Staff is still waiting on the DOE Department of Energy for some grant funding information. Mr. Green can touch base on that if there's any questions. The supporting action, investigate and complete the study for a cost effective options and technologies for reducing disposal brine waste. Again, second quarter of 2024, we're still waiting to hear back on the process of scheduling a pilot program for the zero liquid discharge.
And if, and if I may jump in here, on the original strategic plan, she, the RNI committee was assigned to work with the utilities manager to research other viable options of brine waste disposal. And that ad hoc committee did present a draft report and has asked to bring back to RNI a revised report to be presented to the board since it looks like it's going to take a while for that zero liquid discharge. So I'm hoping that they will be bringing it back at the next RNI meeting so that we can bring that report to the board. So they, they did do a lot of work on it.
Could do. Okay, understood. So that is second quarter 2024. Again, board approval of the zero liquid discharge pilot testing program, updated target completion, which probably needs to be changed based on some of the other zero liquid discharge dates. Currently that says fourth quarter 2023. I imagine we'll need to amend that. Mr. Green, what do you think? Second quarter 2024?
Yeah, that sounds more feasible. Once we get the DOE's rubber stamps this, it's about three months to build this little package plant. That is going to be that little zero liquid discharge. Again, that's it's very energy consuming. So it's a small little package plant and it takes 240 volt and then only processes at about five gallons per minute, whereas that plant flow is about 600 gallons a minute. So we'll have to obviously create some permeate, which will have brine reject. And then from there, we'll see how that works. But the process to build that plan will be about three months. So if we got word today from the DOE, we rubber stamped your permit, you're good to go. We would still be looking at end of January for a kickoff date.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on, complete the in-stream flow study task one to include Van Gordon Creek. We did change the scope of that, of that task one to include Van Gordon Creek. It was board approved on nine, 14. We're hoping that it will begin here in October 2023, the beginning of that work. We are still hoping to report those results to the board by fourth quarter 2024, which is a little bit of a change from the last go around. Not quite sure what that date was, but it did get pushed a little bit. Moving on to complete the CDP application, revisit the CDP project description to our CDP application. Staff did select SWICA as the consultant. We've had a couple of meetings and we're going to continue to have meetings, not only with SWICA, but with the coastal commission, with the county. And most recently, Mr. Green and Mr. Reaper met with the TAC, Technical Advisor Committee on a non-related item, but we're trying to bring all those groups together and we'll begin to start working and chipping away at that project description. It's our hope that we'll have that done in the fourth quarter of 2023. We do have a good head start, running start in terms of our project description. It's, it's there. It's just, we're going to use our consultant to tighten that up a bit.
Director Farmer?
Yes, thank you. And SWICA is?
That's actually the acronym. I think, I don't think it's broken down into each letter means a word. Mr. Green, can you help me? I tried to look it up, but basically that's what everybody calls it, SWCA.
Yeah, I tried to look it up too, Mr. Green.
You know, I've, I've actually, yeah, I've delved into see what's behind that nomenclature and that it's just SWCA. And I'll ask Bill and Brandy, we have a site visit on Tuesday, so I'll, I'll bring that up and say, where, where was this derived from? Yeah, because I don't have the answer to that. I'm not sure. I've looked up their website and just, we'll ask them. Well, we'll get down to the bottom of it Tuesday.
It's kind of like somebody calling something ABC Electric or Acme something. They just decided on those four letters.
Yeah.
Okay, Director Farmer, your light still on? Do you have another question?
I'm just chuckling about SWICA.
Okay.
Moving on, submit the data needed to complete the CDP application for the county. Fingers crossed, fourth quarter 2024, we're hoping maybe for a little bit earlier, depending on how our meetings go with all the stakeholders. So as soon as we get the project description with the input of the county, with the coastal commission, with the TAC. If we can tighten that up, we'll, we'll see where we go from there. But long range, fourth quarter 24, fourth quarter 2024 would be when we hope to submit. I hope we submit a little bit earlier. Mr. Green, do you have any?
Put on that. So our initial meeting, again with SWICA. They're taking a really cautious approach to this. So we're, we're doing a lot of internals and back and forth and data sharing. And we're, we're almost having discussions every day about what do you think about, you know, this concept and this alternative? And they, they've asked for a couple of months to actually prepare this document. So I, I think after our Tuesday meeting, it might be a little ambitious by December 31st. Because we're kind of laying out some alternatives initially, internally rather. And we're going to take that to Slow County and, and kind of regroup with them and, and kind of feel out what their process is. And then after that, we thought we'd have county coastal and all of us regroup together. Kind of before laying out the final process here. So as an update as of Tuesday, I think January 2024 is, is more achievable date for us. I don't want to set any false expectations. Unfortunately, this takes some time. And again, we want to do it right. We want to do it right the first time.
Okay. So we will go ahead and change under the supporting action, revisit the CD project description to our CDP application. In terms of completion date, you want to push that to first quarter 2024?
Yeah, let's pick it 13124.
Okay.
And I'd love to bring it for you guys ahead of time, but I, I just, again, I wanted to give you a, a date that's achievable.
Okay.
Any questions before I move on, Madam President?
I don't see any lights on.
Okay.
We'll take public comment when we're all done with this whole grid.
Moving on to our strategic goal of execute phase repairs and upgrades for the wastewater treatment system. Did update a few dates on here to include defined methodology for identification of required reporting and dissemination agent. That was completed or updated target completion date was 413 2023. And staff selected NBS. Mr. Green, you have to help me with that acronym as the dissemination agent. That's correct.
I think Ms. Fritz knows what that means.
Oh, it's your item. Well, Mrs. Fritz might be, Ms. Fritz will be able to update us on that.
I'd have to find out. I don't know what NBS stands for. I've got it in my notes from when I was on the ad hoc committee, so I'll bring it to you next time.
So as far as that goes, I believe that's a completed item that will be end up being pulled from our list. Correct? Okay.
Okay. And those updates, those updates, I believe we're seeing in the finance reports quarterly and also on the revised CIP list when we get them put together. We'll be seeing how much money is spent on what and how much of the project's done. Okay.
Moving on. We've got, go to quarterly report supplement to finance and resource resources, infrastructure committees. That's ongoing. Other update, established priorities and an implementation plan for the CIP water projects, wastewater projects not in the SST. That's fourth quarter 2023 for updated target completion date.
I mean, might need to move that one a little bit because we are revising the CIP list and reprioritizing things. So I would push that to the first quarter if Mr. Green agrees.
I, I would agree. And in light of, you know, the, the recent activity in our water system, yeah. I think we'd really like to sit down with RNI and, and some other groups and get some other, you know, the community's opinion as well. And maybe real evaluate some of the CIP.
You think first quarter or?
I think first quarter, yeah. I think by the end of first quarter, yes.
Okay.
Calendar year, first quarter, yeah, 2024.
Okay.
Moving on to our strategic goal of provide optimal fire protection, water rescue and emergency medical services on a 24/7 basis. Update the CCSD board to any and all changes to evacuation planning within the district. That was shifted if, there's more of a placeholder, but we pushed the fourth quarter 24 in terms of some of the leadership changes. And so we might be able to adjust that as, as things, as we get updated and we start getting our fire chief up to speed.
Right.
All right. Moving on to our second supporting action, report on development of evacuation routes. I know that Vice President Gray and President Dean are working on that. We did send out the approved letter to that stretch of residents. That was mailed to the property owners and we're still engaging in dialogue with those property owners. And I think we've made contact according to Vice President Gray, all of them except for one.
Yeah, we, we can give you a little update on that. Do you want to update us on that a little bit, Vice President Gray?
Yeah, I, I don't know. In terms of the fourth quarter 2024, oh, sorry, the, the target date is kind of, is as you, as you noted, blank because it's, it's ongoing process. But it, we are in contact with, as you say, all but one of the property owners. In fact, the one we sent the letter to is the one who's not responding, but we, we are, I think it's safe to say that we're going to try to have a meeting.
Yes.
A Zoom meeting, hopefully with the property owners that we have been in contact with to try to reach some kind of conceptual agreement about what kind of, you know, arrangement we would have with them, agreement we would have with them for use of the road. And also the big question of what needs to be done to make it a drivable road in certain areas and how it gets paid for. So those are the big issues that are outstanding will be, and will be discussed.
Yeah, we're talking about the Harmony Ranch Road.
Right.
Because that route would come out on the other side of the turnoff to 46. And hopefully if we had evacuation, a good part of the traffic could be turning left on 46 and then the other traffic would merge in. So.
And it's also the, the, would be the primary evacuation route, we're seeing Marine Terrace. Because that's where, that's, it's close to them. And the big issue really in terms of improvement of the road is probably the first, the two northernmost parcels. Because that's the road is most primitive and has the most problems. The, the road going through the developed parcels is actually a drivable access road. It's just a matter of getting and arranging with them so that we can use it without knocking down fences.
Right.
And the, and the property owners are also a little bit concerned about when that road would be used. They want to make sure it's not going to be used as a regular in and out to members of the public that it's only used for an emergency during a fire evacuation. So we need to calm their fears of, of that some. Okay.
Well, I'll definitely get Chief Berkey.
Well, I'll definitely get Chief Berkey in loop and into those meetings. And I'm sure we can settle some of those concerns.
We'll update as we can.
Okay. Moving on to prepare and provide to the board a fire prevention plan for Cambria for the board's consideration. A lot of these dates got pushed to fourth quarter 2024 because of some of the changes that we've had in our fire department. I've met with Chief Berkey. We're going to have a meeting with President Dean. And while we've pushed those to fourth quarter 2024, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to bump those dates up significantly. So just kind of a safe marker placeholder, so to speak. But I believe we'll be able to get not only the organizational chart, the defense, defensible space ordinance and the budget and financing alternatives for the plan, what we'll be able to tighten that up. And Chief Berkey's been in the county for a lot of years, so he's familiar with a lot of the different players in the community. So I think we'll be in a good position there. Without any questions, I'll move on to our strategic goal, manage and provide stewardship of district assets, parks, recreation and open space in a timely, cost-effective and environmentally sensitive manner. Define future use and funding for the Veterans Hall. I've met with Vice President Gray and Director Farmer, and we're still working on some of those reports. And I think we just recently reviewed that report and that'll be presented here soon. So I think we're on target for fourth quarter 2023.
I think that's going to be on next week's agenda.
I think I saw it on there.
All right. Moving forward. Updated target completion date for presenting the board, the final design, engineering estimate and status of the fundraising for the skate park. I'm thinking we're going to probably change that date. Or is that already completed? I'm sorry, my apologies. That was completed on 11/27, so that'll be removed on the next update. The final construction estimate to the board and consideration of the status of funding and whether the project can proceed. We're thinking third quarter 2024 based on what we're waiting for in terms of grants. So our O.G.A.L.'s grant that is still, we're still waiting to hear back on some of the underfunding, other funding. Skate Cambria will give us an update on where their fundraising is. So we tagged that for third quarter 2024. Moving on to completion of the East Ranch restroom project. So some changes, some changes with that. There is a few different things in progress. We received some communication back from the county and there's a significant amount of work that we need to do to update our permitting application. And so that is in the works with Mr. Green. In addition to that, we will need to amend our community park master plan and probably have an addendum to the EIR as it applies to where we're heading with the restrooms, which is the use of potable and non-potable water. The community park master plan and the EIR, as we're doing some research, really spoke of waterless toilets and waterless restrooms. And so the plan that Mr. Green was given and I was given with the East Ranch restroom is a prefabricated restroom that has sinks, water fountains, potable and non-potable water. So there's some changes that we're going to be looking at in terms of meeting with another consultant to help us in the amendment process for the community park master plan and an amendment to the EIR. So with that, we've pushed that to fourth quarter 2024. Our hope is, is that we can get some of this rolling pretty quickly, get some plans resubmitted back to the county. But it has, it has slowed a little bit.
General Manager, can I interject in here?
Absolutely.
We were able to pull up the original document that was approved in 2009. The EIR itself calls for water. It says you can use potable water for the restrooms. The community master plan, however, called for waterless restrooms, you know, pit toilets, composting toilets. So that would be the section there in that community master plan that we would have to make an amendment to or amend. So it would be my understanding that we could bring an intent to serve to you, Board, with that amendment to that, but that's something we can discuss and, you know, bring some details to.
So the EIR doesn't need to be amended, just the master plan?
I want to clear the sue legal, of course, and get their blessing. But the document that we unearthed today, the original thing, master plan, or rather the EAR, did call for water.
Okay, do we want?
Mr. Carmel?
Yes, please.
I would love it, but a great find, Mr. Green, because that's the first I've heard of it. So that's good news.
Me too.
Okay, so you agree with that? We don't have to amend the EIR, Mr. Carmel?
Well, we just met yesterday and that information wasn't available. If that's the case, and it's not waterless described in the EIR, then there's no need to amend it. I obviously have to look at it, but that would be a big bonus if that additional step wasn't required.
That would be great. Thank you.
Also, another detail on the bathroom, the rest, there's, there's two plums on the bathroom. So when I say that, there's a plumbing for the toilets that is non-potable. And then there's a sink and drinking fountain that is for potable water use also. So I think our big concern was water consumption for toilet use. So with toilet use, we can plumb a non-potable water, which right across that lot, we have SR1, which is a non-potable source. Of course, that SR1 will go against our diversions, to be clear, the way that will come out of our acre foot annual diversion for our permits. So I just want to make that clear as well.
And what about the potable water?
Well, that would definitely come out of our diversion, yes.
Pardon me?
That, that would definitely come out of our diversion, the potable water, yes.
Okay.
But, but minimal, Mr. Green, in terms of what we're looking at annually?
We calculated and we overestimated that would be one quarter of an acre foot. One acre foot is basically a third of a million gallons. It's 325, 851 gallons. And we use roughly 25% of that at max. So, yeah.
Okay.
Director Thomas?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to ask the, you know, on the line that says construct the restroom, you show a target completion date of, of fourth quarter of 2024. Was, is that your intent, how to show that? Given that we, what we heard at the Post Committee meeting?
I'm sorry, say that, say that one more time, Director Thomas.
Well, given what we heard at the Prose Committee meeting last week, I'm surprised to see fourth quarter 2024 on completion date on the restroom. Is that your intent?
So I think after conversations with Mr. Green and that conversation that we had at the Prose Committee and then what we kind of received back just this last week in terms of permitting from the county. I still have high hopes that by fourth quarter 2024, that we will have it completed. But again, we also have a 240-day lead time on that prefab. And depending on how soon we can get those permitting requirements and plans back to the county would then enable us to trigger the purchase of the prefabricated restroom. And while that's in place, and Mr. Green, I'm gonna let you take this over because you describe it more eloquently than I can. But there's a lot of the foundation work and other things that need to be done prior to the prefab. And I think the prefab installation doesn't take very long to get on. It's very, very quick. But I'm still hopeful for fourth quarter 2024.
Right. So again, permitting, this is, this is two stages. You're getting your planning permitted first, and then from there, you're going to your construction permitting. So when we get that planning portion permitted and completed and rubber stamped, that would be an appropriate time to order that bathroom. That bathroom is a 240-day lead time, stated lead time, almost, you know, nine months. So there's some other projects or some other permitting requirements, grading, you know, drainage. All that has to be looked into, and those are a couple of items that were overlooked initially on the planning phase when this was submitted. So there's some things that we're having to circle back to. So that's why this planning and portions taken a little bit longer than it should be. So I apologize.
Okay, Director Farmer?
Thank you, President Dean. Mr. Green, just some clarification on something you said with regard to the master plan and the master plan suggesting the use of waterless toilets. Did I hear you correctly there? And is that even a possibility?
That is correct. That's true, Director Farmer. That plan that was drew up back, I think it was 2008 or perhaps even earlier, did call for a waterless restroom, no drinking fountain, no hand washing, no lavatory sinks and pit or composting toilets, which are the, well, there.
So is there a potential of, let's say, waterless composting toilets combined with, let's say, some type of hand washing device being used on the East Ranch? Is that a possibility?
The other details that were in there were perhaps the hand sanitizer and towels rather than water use there. So.
I believe the Prose Committee and the board reviewed all of the options and voted in 2021 for the particular restroom that we are trying to get a permit for.
I was going to note that too.
And the waterless toilets and the water and the hand sanitizer was one of the things that we reviewed when we reviewed the three options for restrooms. And the board unanimously agreed, if I remember right, in 2021 to go with this particular restroom.
That's true. Madam, Madam President, also it was requested at that time that a more conservative consuming, consuming toilet be utilized in there. And that's what you see in plans that are right. 1.28 gallon flush rather than, you know, the two or whatever was being presented before.
Okay. And this, this is going to be brought in on a truck and lifted in place with a crane. And whether I'm still on the board or not, I really want to see that happen.
Yeah, it'll come in on a flatbed several states away and we'll rent a crane for the day. And yeah, they'll drop it in, all the plumbing will be ready. So the, the installation time of this is really short. It's a couple of days.
Okay.
President Dean, if you don't mind, I just want to make a comment that while I did vote for the restroom that we chose mainly because it didn't seem like waterless toilets were going in any direction. And, and we chose the, what we thought at that time was the least expensive toilet, which has still turned out to be a lot more than we thought. I would have still been favorable toward a waterless composting toilet, except I was a minority of one. Just want to point that out. Thank you.
I think there is a huge difference in cost too between a composting toilet and a flushing toilet. Okay, so you want to go ahead?
Yes, Madam President. Just to circle back, Mr. Green, you're comfortable with fourth quarter 2024 in terms of completion of the restroom? Or is this something that you would want to push to first quarter 25 based on some of the hurdles we still have with permitting?
There, there are many, but there's small hurdles. I'm still very confident with the 2024 drop dead, yeah, for an installation.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, obtain construction permit and present to the board for consideration. Construction RFP for the East Ranch Restrooms, that's second quarter 2024. That probably needs to be, do we need to adjust that to the third quarter based on what we're talking about or is second quarter realistic?
I think end of second quarter would be realistic.
Okay. That construction permit application was submitted on 9/14. We have come back, they, the county has come back with some revisions as, as Mr. Green alluded to, and so we're working on those. And hopefully we will stay on track for second quarter 2024 for resubmital.
That's actually the, the planning permitting, not the.
Sorry, planning permitting. And then continuing construction of the restroom, still fourth quarter 2024. Present options and estimated construction and maintenance costs, possible funding sources for future community park projects to the board. And that's through the Prose Committee that has been targeted for second quarter 2024. Director Thomas, I don't know if there's any adjustments there. Okay. Moving on, present, present report to the board regarding allocation of the general fund services for services that are not, that are funded through the general fund. And that's fourth quarter 2023. And the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I think we're on track with that. Okay.
Without any questions moving forward, I think that completes our updates as far as any changes to strategic plan.
And again, great job in redoing the way this grid looks. You, you all did a really good job on that and I appreciate it. It's so much easier to follow. And it's so much easier for me having General Manager go through the, what staff has done. Otherwise I sit there, I read it and then I have to ask him. So.
Well, we'll continue that practice moving forward. I'll get better at it.
Okay, so do we have any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Thomas, you had a question?
I just wanted to add kudos to our Board President for recommending going to quarterly, I believe.
Yes.
Kudos for that.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comment on the strategic plan update? No. No, anybody in the audience? Director Howell, I mean, not Director Howell, Mr. Howell, former Director Howell.
There we are.
I almost got you back up here, didn't I?
I thought I was retired. Oh, I just, as a piece of information regarding the waterless versus the flushing toilet on the, on the East Ranch. One of the reasons why, as I recall, that, that we decided to go with the flushing toilet had to do with the volume that the composting toilet was limited. In other words, if, if, if you had a lot of usage, that composting toilet would just fill up. So that was the, that was one of the major reasons why we chose. And this is more for our friends out in the world as well, why we elected to go with the flushing toilet. There, there was a good argument about, you know, you just can't have that many people using something if it doesn't go where it needs to go.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, Director Farmer?
No, I was just thinking about the sun going to a go-go, but it's just, just my little brain, you know, that's all.
Okay, does somebody like to make a motion to accept a strategic plan update?
I shall move.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Gray?
Aye.
Director Thomas?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Director Farmer?
Aye.
President Dean?
Aye. And does anyone mind if we take a five-minute, five-minute break? It is 2:40. How about we make it 2:55? Well, depends on which clock you look at. Looking at Vice President Gray's Apple Watch, 2:55.
Are you ready? Okay, it is 2:54, and I'm calling the meeting back to order. I think we need the General Manager, though, wherever he is. So give us just a minute. There he is. Okay, Mr. McElany.
Yes, Madam President, sorry for the delay.
That's okay, we were a minute and a half late as well.
Okay.
Could you go ahead and introduce Agenda Item 4C, please?
Yes, Madam President, Agenda Item 4C, Discussion and Consideration of Approval of a New General Manager Performance Evaluation Form. It's recommended the Board of Directors discuss and consider this new performance evaluation form. There's no fiscal impact associated with the item. Now we'll turn it over to Madam President.
Okay, I think we have another great project done by our ad hoc committee of Director Thomas and Director Scott. So do we want to go through these items one at a time? Did you want to introduce this, Director Thomas?
Well, thank you, Madam President, and just the short version. Our primary objective is to make sure that each of these statements, each of these performance criteria would be something that can be observed in an actionable statement. So that's how we turned it around. We have the two versions, the red-marked, and then the without the red marks. And I guess you would ask the question, the directors have read through it, if there are any questions or concerns about any of the new statements, then we probably go through them in the redlined versions. If everyone says, shucks, this is great, then on we go.
Okay, Director, Vice President Gray?
Yeah, thank you, President Dean, I did, this is, I just want to make a couple of small comments, and it's really good. I mean, I think all of the revisions make sense, I mean, the editing. And I noticed that there was one or two, I think there are two redundant measurement points that were deleted. One was explained, the other one under planning, I believe, didn't have an explanation, but you crossed out completes projects agreed upon with the Board within the given timeframe. I do notice that that does, it is redundant with the third, with the fourth listed, what do you call it? Yeah, evaluation point. So I think, I think that's sort of self-explanatory. The only small change I'd make, it's in the spirit of what you two did, which is great, is to, in the based on the idea that you have active verbs, starting these little points. On the first two, under communication skills, I would say demonstrates good command of oral expression, then demonstrates good command of written expression, so you have a verb, starting with a verb, otherwise, because that's the style, and I think it's a good style, and it should be consistent. Otherwise, I think, I have, you know, I think everything was, is good. Thank you, good job.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The word I was groping for, by the way, was criteria.
I have some time getting it out, too, so demonstrates, yes. I think that, other than, I don't see anything else I have a problem with in here, I think it, yeah, I'm gonna, in a minute, I was finishing my sentence. I think you did a good job, I don't have a problem with any of the other things in here, I think they were all very good changes. So do we have any public comment on this form? No? Do we have any written public comment on this? Or anybody on Zoom?
No.
No, okay. I guess we're ready for a motion.
I move that we adopt the revised New General Manager Performance Evaluation Form with the revisions suggested by Vice President Gray to add the word demonstrates in, at the start of the sentence for verbal and written communication skills.
Okay.
Second.
Director Farmer, I'm sorry, you had your light on, and I missed it. Did you have a comment?
Well, I was gonna make the comment after we vote, but I was just wondering, and it's appropriate for football season, since you've updated the strategic plan presentation, and now you've updated the the evaluation of the General Manager, I'm wondering, you know, what project will you be tackling next?
We're trying to make things much more improved and efficient around here, so.
Correct.
Okay, can we have a roll call, Ms. Johnson?
Director Thomas.
Aye.
Vice President Gray.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Farmer.
Aye.
President Dean.
Aye, can I ask that each of the directors please complete this questionnaire and have it to District Council Carmel and to myself by Tuesday, end of day, if possible? Because we do have a closed session to discuss the results of the questionnaires on that next board meeting, which would be on Thursday.
Next Tuesday?
This upcoming Tuesday, the 17th. Okay, that gives us enough time, doesn't it, Mr. Carmel?
I think so.
Okay.
It depends on what the comments are, but we should be able to.
Okay. President? Yeah. End of business, 10:17. Ms. Johnson?
Would you like me to send out the updated form that you guys just approved?
Yes, please.
I was gonna ask about that.
Yes, please, thank you. Got it, okay, moving on, discussion and consideration, oh, I'm sorry, you introduce it.
Are you turning this over to me, Madam President?
Yes, would you please introduce this item? Sorry, I started to read it myself.
I will try not to fumble my way through this. Director Farmer, did you see what I did there? Okay. Agenda Item 4D, Discussion and Consideration to Fill the Vacancy on the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Committee. It is recommended the Board of Directors consider applications to fill the Parks Recreation and Open Space Committee vacancy. There's no fiscal impact associated with this item. At the September 14, 2023 regular meeting, the Board of Directors directed staff to advertise and solicit candidates to fill the vacant position on the newly formed Parks, Recreation and Open Space Committee. Vacancy was advertised on the CCSD website, social media, and posted on all CCSD public information bulletins.
Okay, according to the bylaws, the way that we appoint people for the vacancy is that the Chair of the Committee interviews all of the applicants and makes his recommendation for who he would like to see fill the vacancy, and then the Board takes a vote on it. But before we do that, I think we should hear from whichever applicants are here. You don't have your light on.
Thank you, yes, there are two applicants here today, we should hear from them both. And following that, someone should read the comment from the other, written comment from applicant Alita Francis.
Okay, okay, so can we hear from Ms. Amade?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you for the opportunity to come before you in regards to pros as we've made changes. I'm not a new face to this Board. Obviously, recreation is a passion. And I look over the course of the last three years, and who are in this applicant stack, and I've got to ask myself, who's been in the meetings? I have, I've been through so many meetings that I've lost count between the district and pros, and of course, our escape park project. But East Ranch is extremely important. And I think we've raised awareness and conversation to it, especially over the last eight or nine months. I feel like I'm a very qualified candidate, not just for my commitment here, but other areas of our community. I had the pleasure of meeting with Director Thomas, thank you for your time. And I love the opportunity, I, of course, am currently serving, and I'll make this open to the public, on the RNI Committee, and you can't serve in two places. So it would mean leaving RNI and coming to pros. I did say to Director Thomas, I felt like I would better serve our community on pros. But it has been a pleasure, of course, working with President Dean. And quite frankly, part of the reason why I went on to RNI, so that I could work alongside of her, so. With those considerations, I'd love the opportunity, and I'm open to any questions.
Does anybody have any questions on Ms. Amade? Okay, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
I believe we also have Jeff Wilson here.
Excellent, thank you, President Dean, Vice President Gray, Team CCSD. Great to be here, Jeff Wilson again, Camber resident for the last six years. I am genuinely honored to be here today, folks, and speak my, to my candidacy for the Open Committee member position on the newly established Pros Committee, which I think is great. I'm not going to spend time on my experience and my background and education, that's all in my application, my resume, that's not what I want to do. What I want to focus on are my beliefs and my commitments to the Committee. Using the knowledge and the skills that I've acquired over the last 45 years in my business, and to help make the best recommendations possible to you, the Board, for the most informed, most intelligent decisions that you can make for our community. So, I commit to Chairperson Thomas's vision and plan that he presented last week, excellent, and fully embrace the CCSD core values that will guide our work as a team that's part of that. I believe in the objectives the Chairperson Thomas has established, and will support him in fully implementing and executing those. I believe it's time for review of the Pros Mission Statement after 30 years, I believe, 1994, and adjusting it to the 2023 and beyond circumstances and realities as needed. I'm committed to doing the hard work that leads to the best, fast-baked, fact-based objective recommendations that we can give you, which includes employing the decision-making framework, again, that Chairperson Thomas established last week, and expects the Committee to use going forward, it's excellent. And I'm committed to the teamwork and the collaboration that we will need as Committee to employ with, working with other CCSD committees and staff as appropriate, in particular, facilities and resources, which is an integral part of the Pros work. So moving forward, as I look at it, priority work, in my view, is digging into the complex issues and the recreation opportunities associated with East Ranch. In particular, understanding where we are with the numerous community park plans, and providing you guys with a feasible, responsible plan for East Ranch recreation options. Chairperson Thomas again has laid out a clear roadmap for addressing near-term recreational opportunities on East Ranch, and I'm in total agreement with it. However, I do know that PROS is an acronym, there's a P in it for parks, and an O and S in it for open space. So I completely support and embrace integrating both of those into our remit to you and the community. Finally, I believe I've demonstrated through my regular participation in these meetings, here and online, PROS meetings over the last year, Fire Safe Focus Group meetings, Camber Forest Committee meetings, Green Space Board of Directors membership, Upper Salinas Los Tavas Resource Conservation District regarding the recent forest management projects, that I am an informed, positive, and constructive voice for our community. And I plan on bringing all that and more to our collective work as a Prose Committee member. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm very grateful for your vote, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe one of our other applicants submitted a written comment on her behalf.
Yes, Alita Francis. I want to thank the Board members for their consideration for the open position on the Prose Committee. Regretfully, I am not able to attend the meeting today, as I am working for the City of Santa Maria's Community Development Department. Good luck to all the candidates, I am confident that the Board will make a sound decision.
Okay, and you had a fourth applicant that is not here? Director Scott?
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
So can I ask that now?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes. So I was looking, I was looking at your, at your resume here, and it says your last position, because it says 2017 to present.
Yeah.
But the description is in past tense?
Yeah.
So does that mean you're retired, or what?
Good question, Director Scott, yes, I am retired, I have not updated my resume, I apologize for that, yeah. Yep, so I am retired, yes. When was it? March of last year.
Okay, do we have public comment on this? Anybody in the audience wish to make, I think we only have a couple people left. Any public comments? I stared him into doing that, sorry. Guilt trip here.
Yeah, oops. Yeah, this is a hard one, when you have, you have actually four applicants, and I've studied those applications very carefully, they're all good. It's a shame that you can't use all of them, you know, and it really is. So that might be something to think about as we go forward, and looking for opportunities for people who are willing to work with the Board and for the Board. In this particular case, we have two excellent applicants. In this particular case, we have two excellent applicants. I would propose that you accept Ms. Amade for this one, and that you ask Mr. Wilson to join the RNI Committee. I think based upon the nature of his discussion with the, our friends at Waste Management, the penetrating questions that were asked, where would be ideal in a resources and infrastructure context. So they'd both be excellent choices, however, but you don't want to throw one of them away if you can avoid it somehow. Thanks.
I believe we always keep all applications. We keep all applications for two years, don't we?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any more public comment?
Yes, Crosby Swartz, followed by written comment.
Okay, Crosby, Crosby, go ahead.
Well, this is Laura. Sorry, my.
Sorry.
Yeah, anyhow, no, I just want to wait in for Jeff Wilson. The thing is, he has attended many of our forest meetings, and I've seen him at many of the other meetings. And it seems to me that it would be nice to have a really balanced Committee. We have different interests already there, the commercial and the tourists and the, you know, the playing fields and all that kind of thing. And it seems to be a little bit light on having actual open space type of people on there. So I would, I would really say that I've always said that it would be nice to have a person on that Committee from one of the five oh one C threes that really promote our environment to balance out the the feeling of that Committee. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment on Zoom?
No.
Okay, you have written public comment.
I do. The next comment is from Donald Archer. President Dean, Vice President Gray, members of the Board. I recommend that you appoint Jeff Wilson to the open position on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Committee. Jeff will round out the Board with clear thinking and his experience in corporate organization administration, as well as his experience with strong commitment to environmental issues and open space. He has shown this Committee in service to the community by being on the Board of Green Space, the Cambria Land Trust. Jeff is a perfect fit and will be a great asset to the PROS Committee. Thank you, Donald Archer. The next written comment is from Kermit Johansson. Currently, the PROS Standing Committee is composed of three older white males. I am one of them, all of which have served over one to two full terms, which run four years. Adol Potencio, who retired at the end of the last PROS Commission meeting, stated he was stepping down and urged the CCSD Board to select younger people from a different perspective, and I agree with that. We do have a younger candidate that has a more youthful and energetic outlook that has applied, and I urge the Board to select Julie Amade. Here are the reasons. Julie is an ad hoc Committee member, which for three months was exclusively for coordination with the skate park community with PROS, but then was given another ad hoc Committee assignment for research by public sensing and develop a proposal for low-cost and low-impact active recreation activities, which could be implemented without major expense. Julie organized and ran the three-person Committee, resulting in citizen participation in the public meetings and petition signatures. The disc golf proposal for your consideration is now into the Board for consideration, action, and a possible approval. She has nine months of public service on the PROS Commission, no break-in required. The PROS Commission declared the existing and ailing skate park is unnecessary in twenty twenty and voted for the removal of all features due to the lack of interest and need. Julie recognized the need for a skate park for youth activities in Cambria and organized a public effort to petition for reconstruction. Plus, she solicited public donations for implementation. Raising a skate park from the dead is a talent that does not come along all that often for public service. Her skills should continue to be utilized when available. Julie has a viewpoint as a parent, public Board member, school Board trustee, and chief operating officer of a small but successful graphic design agency in Cambria, plus many other life experiences. Other assets to consider is that she is extremely bright, energetic, and has high standards for achievement. Julie will be an asset to Cambria in any standing Committee she is on. I am pleased that she wants to be a member of the PROS Standing Committee and recommend her highly. Kermit Johansson. The next written comment is from Mahala Burton. Dear CCSD Board, I recommend Jeff Wilson to fill the vacancy on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Committee. Jeff Wilson has the educational background, the employment history, and his volunteerism in Cambria, working to preserve open space are all attributes one would hope to find in a Committee member. It is important that recreational opportunities are recognized and that a Community member has a clear understanding of the financial and permitting constraints any recommendations would fall under. Jeff has the background to carefully analyze the, these opportunities that may arise in his work history will help ensure that recreation projects already planned for and permitted for are completed, not left to languish. It is important that there is a clear understanding of the role of a Committee member as advisory to the CCSD Board and that a Committee member can work in a collaborative manner. Jeff will not let you down. Cambria is a charming seaside village semi-rural. Its natural beauty is undeniable and attracts people from all over the world. It is not an urban city with big city amenities, nor do most residents and visitors expect all of that, all that an urban city will provide. Jeff Wilson recognizes Cambria's uniqueness, and as a Committee member will work to preserve this uniqueness. Thank you, Mahala Burton. The last comment is from Shannon Sutherland. I am writing to support Julie Amade for the PROS open position. Not only would she provide a much-needed younger and feminine voice, but she also has a solid volunteer in the community representing our underserved populations. She attends the meetings, understands the issues, has worked hard to be a positive influence, and has earned the position on the PROS Committee. Thank you, Shannon Sutherland. And that's, that's all that I have.
No one else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Director Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. And there are some decisions that are easy and some decisions that are not. It is so heartwarming that we have four applications for this open seat. And I really wish we, we had a bigger tent. I really do. I mean, each of these applicants and the two of you here show so much sincere interest in bringing an enriching set of Parks Recreation, Open Space opportunities. But we only have one open seat at this time. I've thought deeply on this, and it feels to me that the applicant that will bring the most to this Committee this time is Jeff Wilson that I would like to nominate to this open seat. As we've heard Jeff's engagement in Board and PROS meeting, the range of his comments. I've never, never sensed an agenda to push just the spirit of what's best for this community. Excellent listener. I've really been impressed by the homework Jeff has done on all sorts of agenda packets. Challenging, finding holes where there are holes, and bringing up important issues for consideration. His, his passion for open spaces, the sense of equity, the track record on sustainability, and the sense of ethics. Recall, not that long ago, he flagged a policy violation to the Committee. And Jeff has been on the Green Space Board. And although there may not appear much conflict on the surface, Jeff communicated that if he's chosen, that he will be resigning from the Green Space Board to eliminate, avoid any perception of, of conflict of interest. And I appreciate that, that just true north sense of ethics. So, Madam President, what is the next step?
Okay. Pardon me? This is your recommendation?
This is my recommendation.
Okay, so we need to take input from the rest of the Directors. Let's just go down the line. Director Scott? Do you have anything to say? Okay, Director Farmer?
Well, I've had, thank you, President Dean. I've had the very good fortune to know both Ms. Amade and Mr. Wilson. And I have the highest regard and respect for them as people, as well as their commitment to the community. Especially Julie, with regard to the skate park, with regard to her involvement with the East Ranch, and just her genuine enthusiasm for life in general. And I, I love Julie, and I think the feeling is mutual. We really care about each other. Jeff, his involvement with Green Space. Occasionally, Jeff, when I was still living where I was, we were neighbors. We would occasionally communicate. I still see Jeff once in a while, and his commitment to the fact that he attends the, you know, the Forest Committee meetings. He's made comments here, obviously, at our meetings, whether it's in person or written comment. His interest with the Upper Salinas Los Tablas Resource Conservation District. The fact that he has, I think, a greater involvement or appears to have a greater concern for the wooded area in our community, the forested areas. And of course, Laura spoke to that, excuse me, Ms. Swartz, as well as Mr. Archer. And I'm, it's, it's tough, but I'm leaning toward Jeff, and I think it's partly because of my deep affection and commitment to the the woods that surround us here, and Jeff, Jeff has a caring there. And so that's, that's my, that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Vice President Gray?
Thank you, President Dean. Yeah, first of all, I have to say I have a lot of respect for Director Thomas for not punting. When faced with a, when faced with a very difficult choice between two totally qualified applicants. So I salute that, and I also agree with his choice. And, and this is another, not a matter of people who, you know, qualifications or enthusiasm or achievements and accomplishments. But maybe, and as Director Farmer was just saying, and I think as Ms. Swartz was saying, there is a, there is a need on the PROS Committee to have a, somebody who, at least one person is kind of the point person for the open space part of the responsibility of their jurisdictions, if it were. And it's not just the Fiscally Ranch Open Space, but it's all of the open space that, under Conservancy, that CCSD owns, and little parcels here and there, which we haven't really done the great inventory on, but that need management and need planning. And, and I appreciate Mr. Wilson's interest in things like wildfire protection. He's, you know, he comes to the Fire Safe Focus Group meetings, his work with the the Resource Conservation District, which is really important, and also something that the CCSD can take more advantage of. So I think his background in that area is superb. I don't want to take anything away from Julie Amade as an advocate for recreation. I think the, she should continue with that, obviously. That's, you know, it's great things she's done. And I don't know, you know, I agree, I guess, with, with several people here that we have, it's unfortunate we can only choose one. But, but Mr. Wilson, I think, has the, he's the match for the slot, what's needed there right now in that Committee.
Director Thomas?
Thank you, Vice President Gray. And, you know, what you say about not punting just made me reflect back. And this, this feels like the toughest decision I've made since I retired. I, and Ms. Amade, I am in awe of the capabilities and skills you have. And as I said earlier, I want you both, but this is my recommendation. Yeah.
Well, I'm sure we'll keep her application on file in case you have another vacancy, but to be selfish, I'm glad I'm not going to lose her from RNI. It's nice to have another woman on the Committee. So I agree with Shannon. I mean, Shannon felt the same way with having Julie there, but I'm sure Julie will remain involved. She is still an ex, no, we don't have ex-officios on Committees, but but we do have rock stars, and she can still speak as a Community member, earn public comment and all of that. So, yes. Okay, are you ready to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Jeff Wilson to the open seat on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Committee.
I'll go ahead and second that. Thank you.
May we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Director Thomas?
Aye.
Director Farmer?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Gray?
Aye.
President Dean?
Aye.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Because we keep these applications. You might want to put on the application form all of the Committees and tell, and ask people who are applying to rate which Committees they want to be on, so that later on, when we have openings, that you would then have that information.
I think on the website, when you go to fill out the application, it does have boxes to check for what Committees you're interested in, doesn't it?
No, we did at one time, but that's because we had multiple openings on multiple Committees. So when I create these applications, it's, it's basically for one Committee.
Okay. Just, just a thought.
So in the future, I can do that if that's something. As long as they understand that there's no openings on those other Committees at this time.
Okay. So do we need to put that on the agenda, do you think?
Should we ask Mr. Carmel if this is?
We haven't seen Mr. Carmel yet today, very much. Mr. Carmel.
If, if you'd like to take action on that to add it to the process, then yes, you should.
If I can take, we can do that today?
No, no, you have to add it to an agenda.
Okay, we'll add it to an agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and to say we keep these applications for two years, you know, then that gives people the chance to do that. Thank you.
I just misplaced my agenda here. Second. Okay. Director Farmer?
I just wanted to make a comment with regard to what both Kermit and Shannon said about Julie. And just the fact, and they're two very passionate statements about wishing for Julie to be on the PROS Committee. Once again, a reflection of the quality of people that are already on the PROS Committee. And it was just heartwarming to hear what they had to say about Julie, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I, I know it's selfish of me, but I'm glad you're staying on the RNI Committee. Okay, moving on, may we have an introduction to Agenda Item four E, please?
Yes, Madam President. Agenda Item four E, discussion and consideration to direct staff to advertise for an open position on the Finance Committee. It is recommended that the Board of Directors discuss and consider this action. There are no, there are minimal costs associated with this as far as fiscal impact, which includes staff time and advertising expenses. The Tribune's publication cost is two hundred and fifty dollars per ad. Amy Wyatt resigned from the Finance Committee on September eighteenth. And in according with our CCSD Standing Committee bylaws, staff recommends that the Board of Directors direct staff to advertise to solicit candidates for that vacant position.
Thank you. And I think what we have done previously is we have decided that we were not going to advertise in the printed newspaper to save the two hundred and fifty dollars, but that we would advertise on the website, social media, and the Cambria CA online paper. Was that correct?
I believe that's the discussion we had, Madam President.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they wish to say about that?
About the advertising? A question?
Sure.
Okay. So since this is, follows right, you know, right on a, another sequence, you know, application process for the Finance Committee. And I think there are four or maybe five applications, one, only one of which, of course, led to the person being appointed. Do people have to reapply who already applied?
That's a good question.
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes.
And that's why I thought, why would they have to reapply?
But we do have to advertise to see if there are any more applicants.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
And then send out an email to those people saying, are you interested? Or something like that.
I would think so. Is that the proper way of doing it, Mr. Carmel? Just send out a notice to the people who've, applications from the last Finance Committee vacancy that the position's open again and see do they need to reapply or just be notified?
I think they just need to be notified and express an interest in the position.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Did you have some, you look like you have something to say?
Well.
Well, well, well perceived. There's nothing wrong with Vice President Gray contacting those who have applied in the past.
Right.
And just saying, hey, did you know?
Okay, yes, and then we'll take new applications as well.
An application is already on file.
Right.
That are already in, in the hopper, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else, or should we take public comment on this? Okay, do we have any public comment on this? I'm not going to guilt him into speaking. No, okay. Okay, so does someone you want to make a motion?
I move, I have to go back to the pager. I move that we direct staff to, to advertise for an open position on the Finance Committee.
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Could I clarify?
Yes.
And not do the Tribune ad? Because that's what it has in the.
Oh, correct.
I could, if, if that's like a friendly, as a friendly amendment, I guess, yes, I'd accept that. Yeah.
Okay, so we're getting advertised on the social media, the website, and the Cambria CA. Okay.
Can I second a friendly amendment?
Vice President Gray?
Aye.
Director Thomas?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Director Farmer?
Oh, it's nice to have something friendly happen here, so, thank you.
President Dean? President Dean?
Aye, thank you. Okay, so now we're on to Board Member Committee and Liaison Reports. We have the Finance Committee Report, written report in the packet. Do you have anything to add to your written report, Vice President Gray?
No, I don't.
Do we have any questions from the Board on Vice President Gray's Finance Committee No?
No.
Do we have any public comment?
No.
Moving on to the Policy Committee Report. Do you have anything to add to your report?
I do not, thank you, Madam President.
Does anybody have any questions for Director Scott on our Policy Committee Report? Okay, do we have any public comment on the Policy Committee Report?
No.
Okay, my Resources and Infrastructure Committee Report is in the Agenda Packet. Does anybody have any questions? Do you have your light on?
Actually, thank you, President Dean. I actually kind of had, had a question. I don't know what, I probably should read, watch the tape, but I was kind of curious about, in the section on the Brian Disposal Ad hoc Committee, I think it was Mr. Webb's presentation, there's quite a bit of discussion about the Flaglot, and I, I just was wondering what, how viable that's considered as an option, because, and what came out of that discussion?
I don't think it was decided, they weren't determining whether any of these things were actually viable or not. They were looking at all the options that had been looked at before and any possible new options. Their report is going to be coming back to the RNI Committee because they, they determined that this would just stay as a draft, and once the zero liquid discharge pilot program took place, that they would complete deport based on the results of that. But since the zero liquid discharge pilot project is going to be a little while, I was asked if they could bring their report back, fine-tune it, and then be able to present it to the Board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Director Scott? Oh, sorry, your light was on. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay. We have the PROS Committee Report that was a handout. Do you have anything to add to your written PROS Committee Report?
Nothing additional to add.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Director Thomas on his report? Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, we have several other liaison and ad hoc committee reports in here, and they're all written. Does anybody have any questions on any of the liaison reports that are in the Agenda Packet? We have the Friends of Fiskelini Ranch Preserve Report from Director Farmer. We have the San Simian Community Services District Report from Director Scott. We have the NCAC Liaison Report from Director Thomas. We have the Cambria Forest Committee Report from Director Farmer. And that is all the liaison and ad hoc committee reports. Does anybody have any questions on any of those reports? Are there any public comments on any of those reports?
No.
Okay. Moving on then to future agenda items. Director Thomas?
I merely wanted to suggest the, that there's no need to read the list coming up, because we know we'll see something from the General Manager soon, but that we, I'm just encouraging that whatever we want to add from our top of minds for this topic, but I don't have anything additional.
Okay, did you want to hear what's upcoming first before we ask you for future agenda items?
Oh, I was suggesting that we might not need to read through, read through that list, but that is merely a suggestion.
You had a question on which standing committee addressed?
That would be appropriate for some future agenda, in which, which standing committee has within its purview solid waste disposal.
Anybody else? Director Gray?
Vice President?
Director Scott?
Yes, I was thinking maybe bring the committee application.
Oh, that's true. So to have the standing committee applications brought forward to discuss whether to add all of the committees on there. Okay.
Or how to do that.
Yeah, how to do that, okay.
Those on the staff.
I don't think it's too complicated to do that, because I think we had it on there before to check off which committees you were interested in, in addition to the one we had an opening for, didn't we?
I had done that because there was actual vacancies on those committees on the application, so that's why multiple committees were included at that time on the application.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring this forward in a future agenda item to talk about it. Okay, anybody else? No? Well, if there's no objection, we can adjourn, and I'm amazed that we got done at 3:38. Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.